The council meeting to order for Monday, August 9th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Mesky.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Nelson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented? Seen in hearing, then I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion does carry. Next we have consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of August 5th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of August 12th, application for exempt permit from the Knights of Columbus, the council payable report, August 1 through 14, council's acceptance is the monthly building report for July, and council's information, the Invest in Wilmer Board meeting summary of July 17th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion does carry. Next we have open forum, Mr. Glenn Nagin. We have a three-minute time limit, and our staff keep the timer. And at the end of the three minutes, you'll hear a little ding. We just ask if you live within the city or outside of the city.
My name is Glenn Nagin. I live in the city of Wilmer, in the southwest part of town. I'm here to invite you and promote Veterans' or Patriot Day on September 10th. It's a Tuesday night commemorating the September 11th terror attacks. And we're hosting it in Wilmer at the City Auditorium. It's going to start at 6:30, although the doors will be open early, and the War Memorial Room will be open also for people to tour and take a look at. We intend to honor veterans and first responders. And as a retired police sergeant with 34 and a half years on Wilmer, I'm passionate. And as a Vietnam veteran, I'm passionate about that. We have a guest speaker that's coming in. His name is William Federer. He's written about 20-some books, and he's a historian and author. And he's going to be the guest speaker on that particular night. And so we'd like to invite everybody. We've got commitments from some fire departments already in the county that are planning to show up in uniform and be recognized by name. And that's what we're looking, and our goal is. So, Mr. Mayor, I know is already, in fact, when I mentioned it to Mayor Calvin, he indicated he'd read some of the books that Mr. Federer had written. So, and then Andrew Lang is going to also help with the presentations. And so we hope to have a good turnout and honor all of our veterans and our first responders. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That's all I had for open comments. Next is Public Works Public Safety, Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Public Safety Committee met on Wednesday, August 7th, in Conference Room 1 at the City Office Building. All of the council members were present, as well as the Mayor Marv Calvin, Public Works Director Sean Christiansen, Police Chief Jim Felton, Parks and Recreation Director Rob Baumgarn, Engineering Administrative Assistant Kelsey Del Bosque, and Matt Dawson, Tony Ammon, Tom Anberg, Jose Gomez, and Juan Gomez. Meeting was called to order at 5:15. First item of business was to receive testimony for a liquor license violation. And the representatives from El Tapatio were at the meeting. We had a large discussion about this at the last city council meeting, that they did not attend the July meeting. But they did attend the Public Works Public Safety meeting on August 7th, and explained that it was just a miscalculation in the driver's license check of the person at, for the liquor violation at El Tapatio. They were given information about the ID classes that are put on by the police department. And we talked a little bit about how they could prevent that type of a violation from happening again. The next item was a public safety update having to do with the police and fire department statistics, and they were in your packet. I'll open up to any questions. If you have them, I just want to point out, one, that there was a significant difference in numbers from 2018 to 2019 was in traffic stops. In 2018, in July of 2018, the police department had stopped 603 vehicles. And in 2019, there were 292. And that basically is probably attributed to their shortage of five officers right now on the department. So they're keeping up with calls and probably have less time to do traffic stops. Any questions about the police department or fire department statistics? Okay, then the next item was on the local option sales tax. And staff brought forth for approval, a request for a construction manager and architects. And I would like to call on Dr. Tony Ammon to explain a little bit about this.
Thank you, Councilmember Osmus. Thank you, councilmembers, Mr. Mayor. I'm on the Invest in Wilmer Board. We've had some, you know, meetings ongoing throughout the summer, every two weeks since the spring. We have come to consensus on a project manager at risk with an architect. All of our subcommittees, or at least not all of them, the four subcommittees that have requested proposals for the general contractor and the architect are the Athletic Fields, Civic Center, Swanson Field, and Robbins Island. We are at a point, and you can see on our website, the committees have prioritized the kind of recommendations. Those have been presented to city staff. And through their assistance and with our city administrators' help, we're going to be sending out a request for proposal if the council so deems that as the next appropriate step. We, as the Invest in Wilmer Board, have come to consensus on that. We presented that to the Public Park and Rec through Mr. Baumgarn, who their committee has approved it, then went to the Public Works. They have signed off on this. And we would like full council approval on this as the next step now. And then we're hoping with the ensuing actions to really finalize the drawings and nail down costs, and then work towards starting construction next spring. Any questions on that, or?
Thank you so much, and thank you for all of your work. And I see Mary Sawatsky is here as well, for all of your work on the Invest in Wilmer.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to approve the recommendation of both the Invest in Wilmer and the Park and Recreation Board to proceed with RFPs for both the construction manager at risk and the architectural services as presented by the Invest in Wilmer Board at their July 17th, 2019 meeting. And I will make that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the construction manager at risk and architect. Brian, can this be done in one motion, or do we need two separate, seeing there's two separate actions?
It can be done in one.
Okay. The motion made and seconded. Discussion by council. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification. I think in the minutes, it reads that specific projects are the Event Center, Athletic Fields, Swanson Fields, with the Community Center as an alternative with that. And I think that was different than how he stated it, so.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Alvarado.
Should we get a clarification on that? He mentioned Robbins Island, or will it?
Robbins Island will be... Madam Chair, do you want me to answer the question?
Or I could clarify... Go ahead.
So Robbins Island and the Stormwater will be done by an agreement, professional services agreement with Boltman Mink.
Okay.
And so that'll be done outside of the construction manager at risk. And so those projects would not need the construction manager at risk or the architect.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Osmus.
Do I need to amend the motion?
I think to be in accordance with what Councilmember Nelson is stating, that would be appropriate, yes. I was trying to figure out how I was going to get you back to that.
No, that's okay. So we will just put the motion to include the specific projects for the community, including the Event Center, Athletic Fields, Swanson Field, with the Community Center as an alternate.
I'll accept that.
Motion made and seconded. Additional discussion, Councilmember Mesky.
Just apologize for not being at that last meeting. But I know the answer. But for those that are watching, what does it mean that the Community Center is an alternate?
What that means is that the committee, or there were certain members of the committee who had requested that to be bid as an alternate, simply because if it ends up being that the City Hall and the Community Center end up going together, that they don't want the other projects held up based on the fact that the other three projects may be, in fact, ready to go, but the other project might not be. So they want it as an alternate, so that they know what that additional cost is. And then also so that, for accounting purposes, if those fees are going to be assessed, there's $2 million in the Community Center budget. And if some of those could be spelled out to that, it possibly would allow that to happen. But I believe the intent was to streamline the process and not to have the process held up.
Thank you for the explanation.
Councilmember Nelson was there. I don't know if that's what you agreed.
I think the other part of that would be that if the Community Center and the City Hall are together, that constitutes a different type of project than the other local option sales tax projects. And so Community Center would need to work with the building of the City Hall so that it shouldn't be encumbered underneath the local option sales tax process.
Additional questions or comments? Either of you have any comments that you want to make in regards to that particular question? Okay. Additional comments from the council? Okay, this is a simple motion to direct staff to prepare the RFP. And the motion is made and seconded. And it is amended to have the Civic Center, the Community Center, as an alternate. All in favor of the motion as presented? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion does carry. Councilmember Osmus.
Okay. The next item that we discussed was with the Glacial Ridge Curling Club. And the staff brought forth for approval, the request of the Glacial Ridge Curling Club with prior approval from the Parks and Recreation Board to hire Lon Nagin of Nagin &amp; Associates as the architect to design the new curling facility. The club is currently fundraising for the project, and choosing an architect will allow the Curling Club to seek additional fundraising opportunities by showing drawings of the facility to potential donors. Motion was made and seconded to authorize the Glacial Ridge Curling Club to hire Lon Nagin &amp; Associates as the architects to design the new curling facility. I will make that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the architect for the new curling facility. Discussion. Councilmember Mesky.
Again, just for clarification, this was part of the agreement we had with the Curling Club, that this is at their expense. This is just a formality, that the council wanted to have that approval of their architect.
Right. What it is, is that they can't enter into a contract. From the way I understand it, I was not there for this portion of the meeting. But from what I understand is that, well, I'm not going to figure it out. I'm going to turn it over to the attorney. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I do want to make a couple clarifications to what we're doing under the amended contract with the Curling Club. You may recall, earlier this year, we came forward to the council with an amendment to the initial build-to-suit lease agreement that the city had with the Curling Club. The purpose for that amendment was to kind of move forward in the process, this point that you're at tonight, where an architect would be hired. Under the original contract, that would come later, after the Curling Club had done a large percentage of the fundraising, and after they had made an initial donation of about 60% of the total project cost. The Curling Club approached us and asked for an amendment so that they could move the design phase up in the process, so that they could take some renderings of the facility and use that in their fundraising to raise the remainder of the funds needed to actually proceed with construction. We found that was a reasonable request and worked out an amendment with them. So now, under the contract, it's important to know that the city would be the party actually hiring the architect. The contractual relationship would be the city hiring the architect to design a structure that will be owned by the city. It will be paid for under the amended contract by the Curling Club. So this motion that was made at the committee, I think, was to introduce a resolution. We were finalizing the resolution late today even. But the resolution authorizes the city to hire Nagin &amp; Associates as the architect. And it references two conditions precedent to that action. The first being that the Curling Club provides the donation in an amount of 105% of the proposed price for Nagin &amp; Associates to do the design work. And the second, given that there's some key pieces that are not included in the Nagin proposal, most notably the design of the refrigeration system, the second condition for this motion is that that piece, the refrigeration system and any other pieces that need to be completed before this is ready to go to bid, will come back before the city in exactly the same manner. The contract amendment contemplated this would be kind of one shot to hire all the design professionals, architect, engineer for the refrigeration system. We're actually going to be going, it looks like, in at least two actions now. Getting the architect on board now. Presumably, an engineering firm for the ice system at a later date. And the resolution makes clear that for both those pieces to proceed and for the city to be required under the contract, to actually enter into the contract to hire these professionals, it must first receive the donation from the Curling Club.
Additional discussion. So there's a motion to allow the city of Wilmer to hire a architect to work with the Curling Club on designing the facility, with other agreements to be forthcoming. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Osmus.
Okay. Item number six on our agenda was the purchase of vehicles for the Wilmer Police Department. Staff brought forth for approval, the purchase of three squad car replacements. The 2019 CIP indicates that three squad cars were replaced, authorized at $48,000 each. This cost includes the vehicle upfitting, replacing any equipment which cannot be converted from a former squad car, and decommissioned costs of outgoing cars. Quotes were obtained from the Minnesota State bid from Mills Automotive and Atwater Ford, with Atwater Ford being the low bidder of two Ford Interceptors and one Ford Hybrid Interceptor. The motion was made and seconded to authorize the purchase of these three replacement squad vehicles from Atwater Ford. And I would enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the purchase of police vehicles from Atwater Ford. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Osmus.
Item number seven is another resolution. The staff brought forth for approval, the renewal of the city and school facility use agreement. After the separation of the Wilmer Committee and Rec Department, the city and school developed a facility use agreement for the use of each other's facilities, free of charge besides consumables. The agreement has expired, and it is the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board to approve the renewal for two years. Motion was made and seconded to approve the facility use agreement between the city of Wilmer and the Wilmer Public Schools for two years. I would enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to enter an agreement with Wilmer Community Schools and the city for a shared use agreement for two years. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Osmus.
Item number eight is another resolution. Staff brought forth for approval, the purchase of a pickup for the wastewater treatment facility. The department is requesting to replace a 2005 Ford F-250 in accordance with the vehicle replacement schedule. Quotes were solicited with the state contract pricing, received from Erickson Chevrolet Fleet Department for a 2020 Silverado HD2500 in the amount of $32,789.92. This price includes the trade-in and the existing pickup in the amount of $5,175. The 2019 CIP identifies $56,227 budgeted for the purchase. A motion was made by Osmus, seconded by Nelson, to approve the purchase of the Silverado pickup. I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the purchase of a pickup for the wastewater treatment facility. No one locally bid on that?
I would have to refer that to Mr. Christiansen.
Mayor, members of the council, the fact that it's a cooperative agreement, they were able to choose vehicles from that state bid. So if local firms or local companies bid and had their names in there, then I would say the answer is, yes, local firms did bid on that.
Yeah, but the council direction was to purchase local. Similar to what the police department did.
For this vehicle?
For all vehicles, when possible. Right? Isn't that what we said? We wanted to buy local?
I'll have to look into that, then. I don't, I didn't, I didn't recall that being the directive of the council. I apologize for that. We'll have to look at that and see.
Is it still the desire of the council to purchase local? I mean, the police department went with two local companies, Mills and Atwater Ford. And I know, I guess we didn't reaffirm that this year. But I mean, in the past, we said that. So what's the desire of the council? Let me rephrase it. Any additional comments? Councilmember Nelson.
I know we had a question about the procedure that was followed to purchase the police department, because the amount was over our purchasing and that the way you had to get the quotes and those types of things. So perhaps we just need to review that to see if we're going to, you know, if it's the low bid we're looking for, or if we're strictly, if we're not going to work with the state contract, that we're just going to accept local bids. I think, I thought there was going to be a mix between with that, with the option. But I guess I'd have to seek, I don't know for sure, the clarification on low bid versus local bids, so.
Right. My understanding was, is that, exactly what you just said. But if a vehicle is available locally, we would purchase it locally. Like dump trucks and fire trucks and plows and road graders and street sweepers, you can't buy those local.
No.
But that we would try to buy local whenever possible. Was what I had remembered. I very well could be wrong.
But it was just my understanding, then there needs to be sealed bids and a different process used to do that. And I would defer to Mr. Okens with the conversation that we had with that in order to make sure that we're, we are doing it correctly.
Well, I think on this particular one, we can just do whatever the council wishes to do. But I think in the future, maybe we should be looking at that. Councilmember Mesky.
I'll reconfirm what you had said. I think that was the intent, just as we did with the previous police vehicles. I mean, I was disappointed that a Wilmer company wasn't the lowest one. We are the Wilmer City Council, but Atwater is close. But I mean, there are rules that are out on state contract. But if our local companies are part of that pool, then they're in the game. I just want to make sure that they're in the game, so they have a chance to be a low bidder. If they're not the low bidder, so be it. But they got to be in the pool. I would agree that that was my recollection.
Additional discussion. So a motion that's made and seconded to approve a resolution to purchase wastewater treatment facility truck, an F-2500. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Osmus, could you bring that to Councilmember Plowman and have that readdressed at your committee meeting?
I will.
So that we can get some clarification. Or maybe, Councilmember Nelson, if you could talk with finance about it. Maybe the committee chairs can work that out. Councilmember Osmus.
Okay. Item number six is another resolution. Staff brought forth for approval, the purchase and replacement of a ProPatch trailer for Public Works. The department currently has a 1998 Patch trailer, which has reached the end of its useful life and will be sold on auction. Staff solicited quotes for a new trailer with one received from Roughridge Johnson Equipment Company, Inc., in the amount of $94,783 through the state contract. The 2009 CIP identified $143,325 budgeted for the purchase. Motion was made and seconded to purchase the ProPatch trailer from Roughridge Johnson Equipment Company, Inc., in the amount of $94,783. And I would enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a purchase of a ProPatch machine. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Osmus.
Okay. Item number seven is another resolution. Staff brought forth for approval, rescinding the land sale by Hoffman Construction Company for the Wilmer Y Project and proposing a borrow-option purchase agreement with them for material use of the 11.48 acre parcel. This agreement would sell Hoffman the material in the amount of $85,012.50 for the project. Motion was made and seconded to rescind the ordinance allowing the land purchase by Hoffman Construction Company. Then that motion carried. Then a motion was made and seconded to approve the borrow-option purchase agreement with Hoffman Construction Company for material use. And I would enter that motion now. Or did I need to do two motions?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, to rescind the ordinance allowing a land purchase and approve a borrow-purchase option with Hoffman. Discussion. Councilmember Mesky.
Just a clarification question. And maybe explain the reason why we would do this kind of an action. Because those that are watching and think, we've sold the property, now we're doing a borrowing. So maybe a little rationale of why we would do that.
I would, can I turn that over? Mr. Christiansen?
Mr. Christiansen, can you explain the rationale behind this decision?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Absolutely. When going through the multiple pages of purchase agreement, that, most of which is required by the FAA, still having some of that, not hold, but assurances on that property, on any property we sell in the industrial park, there was some concern on that of Hoffman, as there have been on other, you know, buyers in the area, about a couple parts, or a couple items in that, in those assurances. So Hoffman actually approached us and asked if we would be willing to, for the same amount of money, sell them the material instead of the property. And what it does is a couple things. It reduces the agreement language drastically. It accomplishes the same thing. And it also eliminates the conversation that we have at the end of the project of, do we purchase that property back? Do we dump, do we... Do we dump, do we not? And for how much do we purchase that property back from Hoffman? Who doesn't, has stated multiple times that they don't necessarily want to keep 11 and a half acres of property in Wilmer, Minnesota, when they're from Wisconsin. And so the reason was to ease, the ease of things and make things a little simpler and have the same result.
With that being said, then I have a follow-up question. Who assumes the liability, then? And so the liability issue was in regards to the waterfall. And, you know, this is about $650,000 less than what we were gonna sell it to, to a local company. And so we're actually selling, selling it for less to a company from Wisconsin than what we were willing to sell it to a local company for. An amount of $650,000. I mean, you know, even in city dollars, that's a lot of money. And now hearing that, it gives me the impression that we're assuming the liability for the waterfall? Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think the short answer is yes. And to recap, the, you know, the FAA language is triggered when the city is going to be conveying the property. So any deed is required to contain easements for the protection of air flight, elimination of hazards to air traffic, one of which is waterfowl. At the point, this came forward when Dunick was proposing to purchase this site in a much larger area and across two parcels of city property. I know this question was raised by Dunick. City staff, I believe, had reached out to the FAA and done some independent assessments, and I think even involved the city's airport consultant, and determined the risk of there being a hazard to air traffic in the form of waterfall in this location was very low, especially considering the wetlands and the other drainage ponds in the exact same part of the town. And even in closer proximity to the runways at the new airport. So I think the answer to your question is, while the city owns the property, if there were ever any issues, yes, it would be a city responsibility. If Hoffman, under this purchase agreement, were to cause damage or create other liability from its activities on the site, they are on hook. They are required to maintain insurance and to indemnify the city. But on the waterfall issue, I do think as the owner of the property, if there were ever an issue, the city would need to eliminate it.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Just a clarification, I think we talked at the committee, is that something that we're working on to try to get removed from that land through with? Are we still trying to do that?
Well, we tried to get it removed, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't allow us to be removed unless something else has happened recently. Again, I wasn't at the committee meeting, and so I don't know.
With respect to all the land at the former airport, all that land has been released now from the FAA's restrictions, meaning it can be used for things other than airport purposes, and it can be conveyed to other people, as has several lots in the industrial park already. But every time the city conveys property, it has to put in the deed in easement protecting the airspace. And there's several components of that. But that's gotta be in every transaction, and that will always, at least for the indefinite future, while the current airport is in, in use in its current location, that will always remain a responsibility of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional comments? Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we get an explanation in regard to the difference in the, what was discussed in the closed session for the original purchase price we were talking about? And what this contract has for the purchase price of the borrow? It would be good for us to understand that difference.
Yeah, I asked the city attorney that, so I don't know. You wanna handle it, or do you want Sean to handle it?
Mayor, I can give you my best understanding. Certainly, if the city engineer thinks I get anything wrong, please jump in and correct me. But this originally came forward as a proposed purchase of the property, of the fee titled of the property by Hoffman. A purchase price was discussed that was, I believe, the same per acre price that the city council had previously discussed and approved for Dunick. The difference being Hoffman had proposed to purchase 11 acres, whereas Dunick had proposed to purchase across two parcels.
Hundred and forty. Hundred and four? Hundred and forty acres.
Hundred and forty acres, larger than I thought. So the total price is obviously much less, but the per acre is the same.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Councilmember Mesky.
Do we understand what the waterfall mitigation kind of a process is, or what to look for when we're doing the construction? I'm totally not versed in this, but, I mean, if we're gonna be responsible for it, I'm assuming certain things is what you would look for to see whether or not you're violating this waterfall contingency. We're obviously aware of that, and we're gonna be able to monitor that?
Well, the council will remember that Mr. Peterson had, had had the interaction with the FAA, and they told us what to do. So I'm assuming we're gonna follow all that. Right, Mr. Christiansen?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, we were, as the definition dictates or indicates, assurances, we're assured that they, we have to assure the FAA that we are doing this. Now, as Mr. Scott said, this is any time that we sell the property. Those assurances aren't necessarily there if we continue to own it. Of course, they're not on any private property, which across the road is gonna be two ponds. And so ponds can attract, attract waterfowl. And so this, that's why the concern on this particular site, expressed by both contractors, the fact that we're keeping it and we'll have to maintain the pond, I think we'll maintain it like we do any other pond within the city.
Additional comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Osmus.
Okay. That was it for business. The Public Works Public Safety Meeting, the meeting was adjourned at 6:55 PM. Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as submitted for the Public Works Safety Committee. Discussion. I just wanna make a quick comment about the Invest in Wilmer group. They have done a yeoman's job. They've had literally a ton of meetings. And as you know, Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Mesky serve on that as voting members. The mayor serves on it as a non-voting member. And so I can just tell you that this group of people is very diligent about doing good work for our community, very proud of the work they're doing. One of the things that got added into the process was to have the, their minutes, or their actions, not their minutes, but their actions, to go through a committee. And it was selected to be Public Works Safety because that's where the Public Works Director is, which a lot of the work happens at. And also, that's where the Park and Recreation Director reports through, if he has items. And so that's why it was selected. This was to be on the agenda two weeks ago, that the administrator and I had it prepared and ready to go. But then I called and talked to Councilmember Plowman and asked him if he wanted it to go through his committee, which he chose to have that done. So this is one more step in the process for them, and they've been very gracious with us. If you remember, when they first were bringing projects to us, if we wanted to change something, they would change it for us. And so this is another example of, we put one more step in the process for them, although they, they fully understand why we did it, and the majority of the, of the committee agreed that that was a good step to do. And I think our next meeting, I think people understand this is just the way it'll flow. So this is the first action item that has come from the Invest in Wilmer group to the full council. And so I just wanted to point that out, that, so council, if you're wondering, why did that go to Public Works Safety? Because that wasn't in the flow chart. You're right, it wasn't in the flow chart. But Councilmember Plowman wanted it in front of his committee, and the administrator and I acquiesced to that and said, yeah, that sounds like a good process. So that's why that's going that way. So with that, there's a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Additional discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Goes to post. That motion does carry. Next is consideration of a resolution approving the amendment to purchase the sale agreement with Burlington Northern Railway Company for the Wilmer Y project. Mr. Christiansen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As promised at the, at the Public Works and Safety Meeting, there might be some items that are coming in to the council meeting directly because of the short timeframe at this point that we have for this project that is currently underway. Not to bore you with all the, all the ugly history details, but we have an amendment that is required of this purchase and sale agreement for sewer utilities on Parcels 1E, 1F that are state bonded. And so this, these parcels are the area that, that our southern interceptor wastewater line goes through, out to the wastewater plant. And so we have to amend the property purchase agreement, which was purchased using state funds when that project was put in. So the amendment states, the city represents that except for interest created by the permanent pipeline easement, which is what we're giving to the railroad for being there, the bond financed property is no longer needed to carry out the governmental purpose for which it was originally acquired. I approve the amendment to the purchase and sale agreement. The city is also approving the changes to the pipeline easement required by the state, the MMB, to release the bond declarations. We also agree to forward the purchase price from BNSF to MMB and pay the equivalent to BNSF, resulting in net cost of the city of $5,000. What that means is, on paper, the BNSF is gonna buy that property from us, we're in turn gonna pay them the same amount of dollars for an easement, and then we have to pay that $100 amount to MMB, the state, to release them of their interest in that property. So the recommendation would be to adopt the resolution that approves this amendment to the purchase and sale agreement with BNSF Railway and the Wilmer Y, or for the Wilmer Y project. Now, I stand for any questions of myself or Attorney Scott.
Move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember, Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is Finance Committee report of August 8th. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Kelvin. The Finance Committee met on August 8th in, at City Hall. Councilmembers Nelson, Plowman, Osmus, and Fagerly were in attendance, along with Finance Director Okens. We started our meeting at 5:15, and there were no public comments. Our first item that is a resolution to reallocate funds for baseball equipment. Staff explained to the committee that there was a need for additional baseball equipment identified for Swanson Field Complex. The purchase of this equipment would assist to enhance the future improvements being discussed at Orange Field, which will be financed through the local option sales tax. Staff went to explain that due to having to replace cabs and, not having to replace cabs and snowmobiles, snow blowers, when the Public Works mowers were replaced, that there was a cost savings of approximately $85,000, and that the estimated cost of this additional equipment would be $8,081, and would recommend funds from the mower purchases be relocated to buy the additional equipment as presented. It was moved and seconded to recommend to the council to pass a resolution to appropriate $8,081 for the purchase of additional baseball equipment for Swanson Field. And I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve purchase of baseball equipment for the Twinhead and Rec, for the Recreation Department. Discussion. Roll, Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you. I'd just like to ask, who's all able to use this equipment?
Mr. Baumgartner.
Good evening. It would be for anyone's use, so it would be for the youth all the way up to the adults.
That is fantastic. Thank you.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Our next action item was to approve the 2019 Street Improvements final budgets, and they are five resolutions. And bids were opened on Project 901A, which is Fifth Street Southwest, 901B, which is 13, 14, and 15, and 16 Streets Southeast, 1903A, which is 15th Avenue Southwest, 1903B, which is Civic Center Drive Northeast, and 1905 Swanson Field Path. On May 19th, an assessment hearing for the projects was held on June 17th. And our first resolution is to set an ASBID budget for project number 1901A at $441,865. And I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the final budget for 2019 Street Improvements, 1901A. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Our next one is the resolution to, for 1901B at $2,790,172. And I will enter that resolution now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to 2019 Street Improvement Final Budget for 1901B in the amount of $2,790,172. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Our next one is to adopt a resolution setting the ASBID budget for project number 1903A in the amount of $792,533. And I'll enter that motion now.
Aye.
Motion made and seconded to approve 1903A final budget in the amount of $792,533. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Councilmember Nelson.
All right. Our next one is to adopt the resolution setting the ASBID budget for project number 1903B at $680,138. And I'll enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve 2019 1903B final budget in the amount of $68138. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Our next item was to appropriate funds for the industrial park gas line, and that's a resolution also. The committee discussed the need to fund the previous council action approving the participation and cost sharing of the gas line service by Great Plains Natural Gas in the industrial park. The project was initiated by Bacchus Technology Services Incorporated. Since the service line will service additional lots besides Bacchus Technology, it was the recommendation that the Industrial Development Fund pass the city's share of the cost from the proceeds that accumulated in this fund from past land sales in the park. It was moved and seconded to recommend that the council pass a resolution to appropriate $10,324 to cover the city's cost of this installation, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the, to appropriate the funds for the industrial park gas line. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The next resolution was to adopt a preliminary budget Y project utility relocation. Staff informed the committee that due to previously approved council action in relationship to an agreement with Minnesota Department of Transportation for the relocation of waterline utilities associated with the project known as the Wilmer Y Project, and due to previous discussion and commitment from the Wilmer Municipal Utilities to participate in the cost up to 50% of the project, staff was presented a preliminary budget for the council to consider. The Industrial Park Development Fund, as of July 31, 2019, had a balance of $1,821,381. Of this amount, $1 million is reserved and restricted for the Public Improvement Revolving Fund and used to cash flow projects with, until permanent financing can be determined. $115,630 is deferred revenue due to the Magnum Truck Land Site sale, leaving a balance available of $705,751. With the previous commitment of $10,324 for the gas line, the reduction to this project of $685,000, 50% of the signed agreement, the balance would be at $10,427. It was moved, seconded, and passed to recommend the council pass a resolution to adopt the preliminary budget for the Wilmer Y Water Line Reallocation Project at $1,370,000. I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made in second to recommend the council pass a preliminary budget for the Wilmer Y Water Line Project. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Mesky. All right. I just want to point out that, of course, we went through this before, and we talked about how unpleasant this amount of money was, and that there wasn't contingencies in place for it. But this does leave that fund is now depleted.
Right.
And so there, any other improvements out there that are not covered, we're not going to be able to do that, just to understand that this is, the well is empty.
Yeah, I was not talked to about this at all, so this is a huge concern and surprise to me, so. Additional discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Since there's a couple of questions, I don't know if Mr. Okens has any additional comments to make about this resolution, or the, where, the location of the money, or...
Mr. Okens.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The council may remember authorizing the signing of this utility agreement, and that the dollar amounts in the agreement, and maybe Public Works Director Christensen can expand on that a little bit, were somewhat larger than what anticipated, or in what the estimates or the bids came in at. But as one knows, the state of Minnesota is somewhat slow in amending any kind of agreements. And so the dollar amount committed at this point is the dollar amount that the committee took action on, and is expected to be somewhat reduced once the state finalizes their bids and the quantities and the work orders. I believe the estimates in the bid documents, instead of the 1.3, is somewhere in the $800,000 range, but maybe Public Works Director Christensen can expand on that a little bit.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, that's exactly right. Right now, the ASBID estimate would be in the $800,000 range. What happens is, about two years before the bids came in, we were supposed to put numbers together on a, more than likely, a worst-case scenario, so that the, all the bidders at the time knew what they were getting themselves into, and then they would, they were all required to bid it as, as they, as they would build it. We've been assured by Mendot that this is not a monetary agreement, per se, because all projects, anything that comes from this has to come through and be approved through work order anyway. And again, like I say, this, this exact work was currently bid at, in the $800,000 range. And so my guess is that they would, there's a potential for it to even be less than that.
Councilman Mesky.
So my calculation is that that would be a very great, great news. That'd be about, what, $285,000 back in there for expansion projects or anything unforeseen in the whole development area out there.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as explained at the committee, when those final numbers in the state has amended their agreements, that will be coming back to the committee for final action. This is a preliminary budget at this point, based on the agreement.
Council, have any question, any other questions? I'll just ask the obvious question. Why wouldn't, I mean, if we know what the number's going to be, why are we approving a budget that we, we think we might have, that we've been told is two years old by staff, and is not a current number? I mean, it'd be like when I was buying fire trucks, go into a trade show and find out a truck costs a million dollars, when in reality I can build it for $300,000, and I put a million in the budget. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And again, I wasn't privy to any of these conversations, so I'm asking probably some dumb questions, but, Councilmember Nelson.
It was my understanding, when we were asked to do that, that there is a signed document that we agreed to in this amount, and this is simply going through the process of documenting what we signed and what we agreed to. And so that, thus the $1,370, because there, the city did sign a document with that figure in it.
Correct, but when, the last time this was in front of us, the John Heron from Municipal Utilities was here, basically saying the exact same thing that Mr. Christensen just told us, that that number's going to be closer to the 800-some-thousand number, and that was about a year ago, so.
And it's my understanding that staff has been working to try to get that figure reduced. However, that has not happened, and so this is simply documenting action that took, took place previously.
And has the council, we signed that, or...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the council passed a resolution authorizing, and I can defer to the city attorney, the document, there was action and no action to set a budget at that time.
Okay. In this dollar amount, is that right, Mr. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that's correct. I don't have that agreement in front of me. I do remember this Y utility relocation agreement, master agreement, came to the council and was approved.
Right. Okay. Sorry, I'm asking a lot of questions here, but additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
And our last item just covers the discussion items that we had. We went through the cash and investment reports by fund. We talked about the Hidden Valley Estate deferred assessments and our upcoming meeting schedule. And that was the end of our meeting, and I would enter, make a motion to approve the minutes at this time.
Second.
Motion made in second to file the minutes. Additional discussion. Hold in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next we have Community Development Report for August 12th. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Development Committee met Monday, August 12th at City Hall at 5:15. Present was myself, councilperson Davis, Nelson, and Schwantes. Others present, Dr. David Ramstead, Director of Planning and Development, Brian Gretzmann's intern city administrator, Mayor Kelvin, Aaron Beckman, EDC Director, Mitch Schuler, Ryan Harberts, and Dr. Jim Sandstrom, all from Epitopic. Item two was public comment. No one was there to speak to us. Item three was the JH Herzog TIF agreement. Robert Scott, our attorney, was there by telephone, so we had a conference by phone, and Attorney Scott informed the committee that the city council has previously approved the earlier drafts of the Herzog TIF agreement and TIF plan. Since March of 2019, there's been a number of conversations between the developer and staff that shed light on the need for a separate development agreement to address the party's responsibility for the extensive public improvements needed for this project. Therefore, some modifications have been made. To simplify, the TIF agreement and a new development agreement has been drafted. Changes to the version of the TIF agreement previously approved by the council include simplifying Section 4.3 to remove most of the provisions for payment for county road access improvements, which are now included in the development agreement, and corrections to the maximum reimbursement amounts to the developer, which are expected to be very minimal. There was a motion made and seconded to accept the TIF agreement, however, it had not been fully approved. So I'm going to call on our attorney, Mr. Scott, to see if there's been approval now by both parties.
Thank you, Mayor, Member Fagerly. Yes, we do have final confirmation received this morning from the developer that we have final agreement on the TIF agreement and the development agreement. And I'd be happy to explain the minimal changes to the draft that were in your initial packet, if you'd like.
Yep, please do that.
The TIF agreement, the only changes, and just so everyone understands, there's two agreements. One is just the financial assistance piece. So there's an agreement for the TIF financing that the city's committing to the project. There's a second agreement now for the development agreement for all the public improvements that essentially is an exercise in making sure both parties understand how the city code applies to this project, given the, kind of, unique aspects and the public infrastructure that needs to be developed to serve the site. And the TIF agreement, the version in your council packet, your initial packet, is just about the final version. There were no substantial changes to that. What we did is we got final confirmation on all the dollar amounts for the four phases of the TIF. This is a four-phase project, potentially, if the developer proceeds with all four phases. This agreement obligates the city to provide a TIF note each time the developer completes one of the phases. And we also have specified the total maximum reimbursement amount in the agreement, should all four phases be constructed. That total, total reimbursement amount changed by about $14. It's at $6,000, excuse me, $6,865,664 now. Again, $14 higher than we had before. What did change substantially were each of the four individual phase TIF notes. In general, the, the pattern is that the first phase has the largest potential increment, presumably because that would result in the largest increase in value for the site. Each subsequent phase has a somewhat diminishing return, I guess, so the market value increase for the second through fourth phases tend to be a little smaller each time. That's a reversal of the numbers we had in the initial draft, and I don't know why those were wrong the first time. I don't know. I think the developer may have supplied those numbers. Maybe there's a misunderstanding. The bottom line is, we have confirmation from the city's financial consultant of these numbers now, and the developer has agreed, so the final agreement is ready to be signed.
All right. Now, the four phases, that's four separate buildings, settle.
Four separate buildings, and 72 apartment buildings each.
Each, okay. So there was a motion made and seconded to approve this TIF district, so I'll make that motion.
Motion made in second to make revisions to the Herzog Tax Income Financing Agreement. Discussion. Motion made in second.
Motion made in second. Thank you.
Motion made in second for the revisions to the JH Herzog Tax Income Financing Agreement. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next document presented was a standard development agreement contract. The key items being addressed are the two development components pulled from the TIF agreement, namely, the access improvements to County Road 5, and the extension of the city's sanitary sewer collection system to the project. The 2020 street improvements by the county will be paid upfront by the developer to the city, who will pass the payment through to the county under a cooperative construction agreement. The 2021 overlay project of the road will partially be assessed to the property by the county through a special assessment, a requirement that is currently being finalized with the developer. Subparagraph B in Section 7, on pages eight and nine, outlines the party's responsibility for the sanitary sewer extension from the existing main located at the intersection of 7th Street Northwest and 15th Avenue Northwest. That will extend to the north lot line of the development property by the way of publicly-owned land, a city park. Again, this cost is incurred by the developer. The rest of the development agreement addresses the responsibilities of the parties to the agreements, the stormwater management requirements, the sewer access charges, and the water access charges. The developer's expenses for expanding the sewer will be a credit for sewer access charges. Overall, the point of the development agreement is to ensure everyone is on the same page regarding the application of the city's ordinance in the project. And just to state again, the developer will be paying $110,000 to the city for road improvements, and then the city will pay the county, and that $230,000 for sanitary sewer extension will be a credit to the project's access charges. And then, has this been revised, and that's the correct numbers?
Correct, Mayor, Councilmember Fagerly. We had a call with the developer's team after the committee meeting last week. They had a number of questions, but I think we were able to largely answer them. They have, again, communicated that they are agreeable to signing the development agreement. We did make a few relatively minor changes to the language, but the core pieces of the agreement that you've described are exactly correct, and the developer has agreed.
So we can approve this, and it'll be done, or it has to come back to us?
Nope. We are ready to approve this contract. There's a final version that I believe was emailed to everyone.
Yeah, about 3:30.
About 3:30 this afternoon. I don't expect that everyone would have read every page in that. I will tell you, it is the same deal that has been negotiated and described. We made some clarifications, I would call it, not changes to the language. We removed Exhibit D, because all parties on the call and we understood each other recognized that was causing some confusion. Exhibit D had detailed what the second phase of the improvements to County Road 5 was going to be, and everyone understands and agrees what the developer is committing to do, which is to pay the initial $110,000 project for the turn lane needed for them to get the access permit to the site in connection with Phase 1. And thereafter, the county is going to do an overlay project and assess all property
Herzog for their agreement on the infrastructure. Discussion.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 4, grant application for utility extension to Epitopic. Aaron Backman, Executive Director of EDC, was present to inform the committee of their request to approve the cost participation in water and sewer line extensions to Epitopic LLC, a company based just outside Wilmer. Mr. Backman explained that Epitopic is a producer of veterinary vaccines for the agricultural sector, selling vaccines throughout the U.S. for use in poultry, cattle, and swine. Epitopic currently holds over 50 U.S. and worldwide patents on their biotechnology products. They make an annual investment of 30% of total sales in research, discovery, and new product development. In addition, they maintain their own manufacturing facilities as they seek future growth, and their R&amp;D and corporate offices located in Wilmer's Midwest Technical Campus. In 2009, the city considered a similar request, but it did not move forward at that time. Today, circumstances have changed for Epitopic, the city of Wilmer, and the state of Minnesota. It was explained that the current wastewater arrangement requires a company to haul all dirty water to the city's wastewater treatment plant. Large trucks have to travel daily to reach the underground waste tanks, pumping station. This increases the chance for personal injury or property damage. Also, there's a risk of accidental surface discharge during the pumping and transport of the wastewater. Moreover, Epitopic is currently without a fire sprinkler system to protect their property and lives in the event of a major fire. Public and environmental safety concerns that would be addressed by this proposal. Paying to haul liquid waste is a significant financial burden on Epitopic and raises uncertainty for the company's future plans in Wilmer. The lack of sanitary sewer and water supply lines is also a major restraint to overall investment in the area and future expansion of other existing facilities. Connection to the city water and sewer will ensure that the area around Epitopic is open to substantial future investments, are protected against fire, and will mitigate the risk of interrupted production activities caused by a loss of wastewater trucking services or the loss of permission to haul wastewater from outside the city limits. Critical to the timing of the water and sewer expansion was the opportunity to coordinate with the Wilmer Y Project. Without this coordination with the Y Project, future routes to connect city services to Epitopic and other businesses could be blocked off. Adding new sewer and water piping now allows the city of Wilmer to complete the connection prior to being blocked by Y tracks immediately east of Epitopic's manufacturing site. Vaxanova, I think I got that right? Probably not. The Netherlands company that owns Epitopic is willing to invest private funds in cooperation with the city of Wilmer and the state of Minnesota for the construction of both water and sewer lines needed to connect Epitopic to Wilmer Municipal Utilities. A letter of support from Epitopic was included in the presentation packet. It was requested that the Development Committee approve of a resolution in support of making the grant application to the Initiative Business Development Public Infrastructure, BDPI, program through the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economics. And in the audience, we have Mr. Backman, Mr. Schuler, and Dr. Okay. I don't know if you want to make a comment. I see Connie is here too, from the EDC.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Aaron Backman with the EDC. Vaxanova wants to invest approximately $20 million into its Wilmer operations, but they can't do that if they don't have water or city sewer. So it's critical that those services be extended. The best time to make this infrastructure investment is before Highway 12 is built, before the rails are laid. We think this is a good opportunity, not only for serving Epitopics, but for other areas that would be to the west of the industrial park. There's a significant commitment on the part of other funding sources or potential funding sources for this project. We have an opportunity out of this $2.2 million project to have 75% of it approximately paid for by non-city funds. That's a good thing. If we can leverage $1.1 million of state grant money, that reduces the burden on the city. Epitopics, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, but they're willing to make a significant commitment to, financial commitment for this project of over $500,000, $530,000 in Vaxanova. The parent company is supportive of that. So I think we have an opportunity. I've had various conversations with Jeremy LaCroix, who is the program manager for the innovative BDPI program that was referenced by Rick, by Councilmember Fagerly. And there is good support at the state level for this project. They're excited about the project. They think this is a benefit for the state, and I think it will be a strong benefit for Wilmer. And with that, I would invite Mitch to say a few words.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight to speak on behalf of this project. I don't, I can be fairly brief here, but I just want to state that, you know, Epitopics is very much a local company. We come out of the Wilmer Poultry Company Life Science Innovations family. We've been owned and operated here locally for our entire history. As a separate company spun out of the technology developed in the Wilmer Poultry operations, we began in 2002. I don't know the original employee number, but we're about 65 employees now with fairly large growth plans. You know, we recently purchased by Vaxanova, a Netherlands-based company, but it's the same family of companies that merged with Life Science Innovations to form, or with Wilmer Poultry Agro-Te to form selection ethics. So we're still really sister companies. And their business model is one that they purchased us not in spite of the fact that we're in a small town, but because we're in a small town and we're in a place very close to the markets. We were purchased to be their U.S. operations. So as Aaron mentioned, they have a substantial intent to invest here locally to grow our business as we distribute vaccine already nationwide and with the intent of also going international as we grow here. As you mentioned, as we mentioned earlier, we have 50 patents, both in the U.S. and internationally. So we have a pretty impressive IP portfolio, again, developed by scientists who live, work, and have raised their families right here in Wilmer and in the surrounding areas. So this is a large help to us and our growth. We're in a somewhat, not only will it give us a substantial return on our investment by saving the money spent in a fairly difficult method of handling wastewater, having to truck everything nearly daily to the wastewater treatment plant, but it also gives us strategic security, you know, in our location right nearby and allows us to continue to grow on that site and to feel comfortable investing more capital here in city. And I think for all of us, you know, we're always happy to get a shot at state grant funding to help all of us. And we hope that the city also sees that the route of the services will be a future benefit to the city. So this is, while we are certainly asking on our behalf for our expansion here at Epitopics, but there's a benefit, not just as Epitopics benefits the community, as an employer and a local business, but also for future land availability and service availability in that direction, you know, just past the already much discussed industrial parks. So we hope that you see the benefit. It doesn't fall on deaf ears that there, you know, it's a substantial input for us financially, as well as for the city, even with the grant money. But we appreciate your attention, and we appreciate you allowing us to come here and speak on behalf of this project. With that, if there's any further questions for me about Epitopics or anything, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Fernando?
Thank you. How many current employees do you have, and how many do you anticipate from this expansion?
We're about 65 employees as we are currently built. We're sure that it'll be at least another 15 or so over the next five years as we grow, both in manufacturing, potentially in R&amp;D as well, all local. And then, of course, the possibilities grow quite a bit from there. But these are all technical and high-wage jobs in manufacturing, biotech, and all that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So with that, there was a motion made and seconded to allow them to file or apply for a grant application with the state, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to support a grant for the Innovation Business Development Public Infrastructure. Councilmember Mesky.
First of all, I'm a big fan of Epitopics. I've had many of the employees that work there go through my courses at Ridgewater, and I would enjoy many more coming through. With that said, though, this is a very large investment piece. We don't have to do all of these pieces today, but it would be really nice to see sort of how that $20 million investment is going to ramp up. I'm very interested to see what kind of investments or timetables that the parent company is willing to put into this. But as we're sitting here today, I'm wondering if we go forward and apply for the grant, and the grant is not offered, is that the end of the pursuit? Or how do we proceed at that point?
Mr. Backman, do you have suggestions on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I always like to have a Plan B. So in answer to your first question, as I understand it from Mitch and Jim, that they are looking at two $10 million facilities that would be staggered in terms of construction addition into the Wilmer area. They are also looking at capital investments that would be occurring in the next 18 to 24 months that would not be insignificant. So they're still working through their numbers, but that's the general plan in terms of facilities. So these would be cutting-edge type of facilities here in Wilmer. Terms of the Innovative BDPI Program, our goal is to try to submit that application in September. We would find out yea or nay in December. If it is positive, then obviously we would want to go forward with a 2020 build. If it is negative, then I would immediately turn around and resubmit under the BDPI Program. So there's Innovative BDPI, and there's BDPI, public, you know, Business Development Public Infrastructure. And that's a, there are four different infrastructure programs at the state, probably more information than what you want. But we would resubmit in February of 2020.
This one's, Councilmember Fagerly.
This is for Aaron again.
Backman.
So if it's denied this fall, is there still time for the 2020 to get the lines in under the proposed railroad tracks before the Burlington Northern has something to say?
Right, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Fagerly, yes, there is a window, but it's not open unlimited time. So we would look at resubmitting in February, but we really would want to get progress in the spring of 2020 would be the goal. And so you basically have a window where they like to see progress in the next 24 months, so going into 2021, 2022. So we would have a timeframe where we could undertake the project. And so I think there's about 12 months where we have a window there.
And you'll be filling out the grant application.
Yes, I will be filling out the grant application, yes.
Thank you.
Discussion.
You know, this is real exciting to see this come to the table. I started working on this in 2001 when I was Fire Chief, when the parent company came to me and said, "We need water and we need sewer." And for those of you that have been around that long, you'll remember that the hiccup was Burlington Northern, Santa Fe, getting the waste line underneath their road, the line that runs north of Highway 12. So it's imperative that we get this done now. I agree exactly with what you guys are saying, because there is potential for explosive growth in that area of town, and a lot of exciting things happening in that direction. So I fully support the work you guys are doing. You guys are doing good work, so we appreciate that. And Aaron, you and Connie do as well. Discussion discussions.
Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Congratulations. It has approved step two. First was getting through the Community Development Committee, and now you're through this process. So congratulations. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 5, the Resolution for City Participation and National Flood Insurance Program. Flood Plane Ordinance FEMA Application.
You guys can, you can stick around if you want, but freedom of leave, so.
Staff informed the committee participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP, has been fully vetted over the course of the past several months, and that the NFIP participation was approved by the City Planning Commission on Wednesday, August 7, 2019. Staff also informed the committee that nothing has changed in the NFIP application since the first time it was reviewed. Staff is looking for a motion to forward the NFIP application to the City Council meeting on August 19. Well, that's tonight.
September 3.
Yeah, that's coming up. And a motion was made and seconded to have a public hearing on September 3, 2019, for the public to have their say. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to introduce an ordinance and set a public hearing for September 3, 2019, for consideration of the National Flood Insurance Program. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion does carry. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 6 was updates. Staff first informed the committee that the permit technician clerk job announcement was posted, and interviews will begin on Monday, August 19. So that was today. Staff also mentioned that a coordinated meeting was held between the Director of the EDC, City Finance Director, and the Planning and Development Director to better coordinate economic development and city cost-sharing initiatives. The current committee was also informed that the department's development activities have resulted in permit revenues of about $360,000 and total development valuation of about $48 million. The development is predominantly spread across the following four sectors: $4 million worth of retail projects, $14 million institutional projects, $16 million industrial projects, and $15 million worth of multifamily housing projects, 143 units altogether. It was also mentioned that Kohl's will receive a temporary certificate of occupancy next week to begin furnishing and setting up product displays. Kennedy Elementary School's $5 million renovation should be done in a couple of weeks, just in time for beginning of school. I see they were doing their parking lot, finishing up today. And the 47-unit 15th Street Flats apartment building will likely receive a temporary certificate of occupancy on August 22 and a full certificate of occupancy on August 30. And driving by that, it looks like a very nice complex. I guess, okay. That was for information. We got to go back to the flood insurance program. We need to have a roll call.
Consideration of forward.
Okay. There's a motion made to consider, or consideration to publish the Flood Plane Management Ordinance by summary. I'll introduce that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to introduce the consideration to publish a Flood Plane Management Ordinance. Discussion by council. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question. I was at that meeting. We didn't discuss this. Can you just explain the order of the things that we're doing if the public hearing hasn't been held yet?
I'm going to call on Dr. Ramstead to kind of give a brief on this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, the, go ahead, Councilmember Nelson.
No, just a question. So the public hearing will be at our next council meeting.
Correct, September 3.
But we're being asked to approve an ordinance or to introduce an ordinance?
I will defer to.
No, I think what's being asked is that rather than to publish the entire
Right.
... report, they're asking to publish the summary of it, which is allowed under state statute.
Correct.
So they don't have to print page after page after page.
And save the city a lot of money.
So it saves the city. So when they do that publishing for the public hearing, they would do it by summary. We've done that on other projects.
Right.
I believe that, I believe that, right?
That's correct.
I mean, I wasn't at the meeting that we haven't talked about.
No, that is correct, and we need a resolution.
I'm going for what we've done in the past, so.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I may, there's two, under the charter process to adopt ordinances, there are two publications required. The first is after the ordinance is introduced and the public hearing is set, the ordinance must be published. This motion on the table now would allow the city to publish the summary. At this time, there will be a second publication required if and when the council adopts the ordinance before it takes effect. And again, you And again, you would likely see a motion to publish by summary that time as well.
Dr. Ramstead, any comments in addition to that?
No, I think, I think it's been a very interesting process. It's been probably one of the most vetted items, I think, that the city has had. You know, the directors and staff and council members and everybody's been pretty much involved, and it's been going on for probably about four months. And I think we're fully exhausted and understand the implications of adopting the floodplain.
Just want to understand the timeline.
Okay, thank you. And so now, to publish it by summary takes a vote of six of the council members. So just so that council's aware, that it does take a minimum of six council members to vote in the affirmative, and we do have one council member absent. And so, and again, because this is a process that doesn't have the full publication, this is why it takes a majority of the council to agree to it. So it's not a simple majority, it's a major majority. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If somebody wants to take the time to read the entire document?
That's available.
It's available. That's, I think that's the most important thing to understand for the public.
Absolutely. Anybody in the city wants to come in and read the floodplain ordinance, they're welcome to get a copy of it.
Sure.
Well, I'm wondering, I know this is not the normal process, but in something that affects that anybody in the city of Wilmer now could be participating in getting insurance, even though they will not be mandated to do so, is this something we could put on the website as a link instead of having to have everybody come to read it? I think more dissemination in this particular instance is probably a good idea.
Absolutely. It's my fact, it's on the website right now as part of the, as part of this meeting agenda.
Perfect. I believe, and I don't want to paraphrase for Councilmember Mesky, but he's asking it to be a separate icon, so you can just simply click on that icon and get it?
Exactly, because I know, it's already, anxiety starts when people don't know what's in it, and if we publish it, we don't put the whole thing out, people will wonder, "Why isn't it all out there?" But if it's right available for a quick click when you go to the website, it'd be very helpful, I think, to alleviate the fears that a lot of people think, there's going to be new districts that are now in floodplains, and everybody will be required to have insurance, which is, none of that is true, but to be able to actually see the document would be very helpful.
Are you talking pre-adoption or post-adoption?
Well, when you're doing your, when you're setting your public hearing, I believe, I don't want to speak for you, Councilmember Mesky, but I think you want it up there right away, right?
Yep, sure.
Okay. I don't see any harm.
Right now, right now, it's a draft, and when it's final, you can just change it to final if that is how it goes.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Additional comments? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantus?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays?
That, or that motion passes as well. Councilmember Fagerly.
And with that, I'll make a motion to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Report. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, that motion does carry. Next, we have a item that we need to discuss in regards to a letter of understanding. And I'll start with Public Works Director Christensen, who I think is going to pass it to our city attorney, but I've got a note here, so I'm calling on you first.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and I apologize for bringing up yet another topic that I failed to mention when we were talking about the Wilmer Y project. And that is, in order to accomplish this first closing of property transfers, and I won't bore you with all of the gory details, we need to do what's called a letter of undertaking. And that is, I'll let Attorney Scott do it a little better than I'm doing, but basically it's a process that will be accepted at this closing of how we will handle the same easement we talked about earlier that's over the top of our sanitary sewer line for the, to the wastewater treatment plant.
Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. And first of all, I would just thank the council for their, for its patience with a lot of these agenda items today that were kind of coming together at the very last minute, but are still important for the council to consider tonight. There was a second action item that I missed my opportunity to raise when we were talking about the Y purchase agreement. And just for context, the council should understand, these are coming forward because the council has approved the purchase agreement, the conveyance of the lands needed for BNSF's Y rail corridor by purchase agreement, end of last year, I think. As part of the preparations to actually close on that transaction, there was a title commitment prepared by MNDOT, and the title commitment, which documents the, you know, liens and encumbrances on the property the city will be conveying to BNSF, identified a few issues that we're still trying to resolve. One of those was resolved, hopefully, by the council approving the amendment to the purchase agreement earlier this meeting. That was a bond declaration the state had on the parcels where the city's sewer trunk mains connecting its collection system to the city's treatment plant intersect with the new rail corridor. Because that had been funded by bond, state bonds, or grants or loans in this case, it was subject to a declaration that the state's Department of Management and Budget had to consent to the city's conveyance of the fee title on those lands to BNSF. We've been working for a long time with the state, with BNSF, with MNDOT, to get this in a form that the council could approve, and that would allow the state to release the declaration. We were assured today that the state will do so with that purchase agreement amendment approved earlier. The second piece, though, is with the same properties, the same intersection of the city's trunk sewer mains and the BNSF rail corridor. In addition to the bond declaration, there is a drain tile easement in favor of the property owner in that location. And the best way to think of this is, at the time, about 10 years ago, when the city acquired the property it needed for the sewer corridor, it took a 200-foot-wide strip of land through the condemnation process from the property owner, which is the Mark Quam Trust. As part of the settlement of that condemnation case, the city agreed to grant an easement to the Quam Trust, who farmed land then on both sides of this sewer corridor. The easement was for drain tile installations across the 200-foot width of the sewer corridor to reach a ditch, which is just adjacent to the sewer corridor. So essentially, the Quam Trust had the right to install drain tile across about a mile width of the sewer corridor so that he could drain his agricultural land into the ditch. Now, the city will be conveying the narrow 200-foot-wide portion of that sewer corridor to BNSF for the Y extension, and that 200-foot width, like the entire sewer corridor bordering the Quam Trust's land, is subject to this drain tile easement. The city engineer has made several attempts to talk to the, to Mr. Quam, the property owner, and get him to release the drain tile easement just with respect to the 200-foot width where the rail corridor is going to be installed. The property owner has confirmed that he has no intention of installing tile in that location. He has not done so since this easement was granted to him about 10 years ago. Given the rail project occurring on the east side of his land, he's, he just, he confirmed that he has absolutely no interest, and there's no reason for him to want to install any facilities in this location. He also stated, though, that he doesn't want to deal with the city or any of the other public partners on this project on a piecemeal basis, and the county needs to acquire a much larger strip of this land for the same BNSF rail corridor as part of the parties' agreement. So the property owner said, "I'll talk to you about the drain tile easement when I talk to the county about the acquisition of the land for the corridor." So that raises a problem because the city was supposed to convey its lands to BNSF in the first closing. There's several closings staged in this Y project, and we needed to get a release of the drain tile easement to get a clear title to BNSF. This is another one we've been working on extensively the last, well, really, since the title commitment came out several months ago. But recently, we've been able to convince the title company to issue a, the insurance, title insurance policy that BNSF needs to close if I supply a letter simply stating that the city, under that drain tile easement, because we have the right to approve every installation, the city will not approve any installations of facilities in that 200-foot-wide area where the rail and sewer lines intersect, that the city won't grant any access to the property owner after closing to that area, that if the property owner were to make any claims against the city, because the city takes those positions, the city would be responsible for defending those claims and for any damages. We, given the property owner's statements to date, we view the likelihood of any claims like that to be very low. And then finally, the city would commit to continue to work, probably at this point in conjunction with the county, to extinguish that drain tile easement. And if at some point the county is unable to reach an agreement with the property owner, we would probably have to participate in a condemnation action as a last resort in order to extinguish the easement that is a cloud on the title of the sewer easement that, excuse me, of the corridor that the city is conveying to BNSF. So with that, my request, and I, you know, talked to staff about this, we do not view this as a high-risk proposition for the city. This is a way for the city to meet its obligations, to convey title with a clean title insurance policy to BNSF, and allow the city to continue working on this issue with the county when the county tries to acquire this property from the Quam Trust. So with that, I guess the request of the council certainly has first to answer any questions you may have, but the recommendation is to pass a simple motion authorizing me and approving me submitting a letter of undertaking as described.
Is that a simple so move?
It could be.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the letter of undertaking between the Quam Trust for this property. Discussion. Councilmember Schwantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say a thank you to staff and our attorney because this is real problem-solving. I don't think any of us can appreciate what it has all taken to get this whole project to where it is at, and this is just one example. And I just want to thank you for the problem-solving that you've been doing, so.
Additional comments? So I have a question for the attorney. You know our history with the Quams, which is not very pleasant. Do you think we have any chance of, I mean, we're doing this in good faith as the council?
Yes.
But I mean, what, what are your thoughts of us being successful in this?
I'm optimistic, Mayor, that at the point, the county is ready to have negotiations with the property owner, the Mark Quam in this case, that they will be able to negotiate an acquisition of what they need to convey to BNSF. They have until, I believe, next May to do that under the master agreement the parties reached. I do know that if they're unable to do that, presumably by later this year, the county is preparing a condemnation action, and I think we could tag along in that to make sure that this easement is extinguished as part of that process. So one way or the other, I think we will be able to remove this issue from the title within the additional months granted if we're able to provide this letter.
Additional discussion, council or staff? Staff have any comments, additional comments?
No, Mayor, members of the council, I think Attorney Scott explained it very well, and I think we're, I think we're good to go.
Okay. Additional comments from the council? Is this a simple motion or is this a resolution?
Simple motion.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, that motion does carry.
Next, we have the labor, again, thanks to staff for your work on this. Councilmember Schwantus was much more eloquent than I just was, so. Labor Relations Committee report, Councilmember Mesky is passing to Councilmember Davis.
Right.
Councilmember Davis.
All right, so the Labor Relations Committee met on Monday, August 12, at 6:15 PM at City Hall. Present was Councilmember Davis, Schwantus, Fagerly, and Nelson. Also, we had Human Resource Director Samantha Beckman and interim City Administrator Brian Grammets. The meeting was called to order at 6:20. There were no public comments. Staff brought forth for approval updating the building permit technician job description since the position is currently vacant and needed to be posted and filled. The title was updated as well as a few of the duties, but no major changes in description or role. A motion was made and seconded, and so I would like to make a motion to approve the updated job description with the two additional minor changes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to update the building permit technician job description. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry.
Councilmember Davis.
Item number four is a resolution and a motion. Staff brought forth for consideration updating the current elected official out-of-state travel policy and the employee travel policy. The proposed updates would tie the meal reimbursement amount, the state-approved levels, the state-approved levels rather than a specific amount set by city policy. This will reduce the time, the time employees and the finance department spend on processing receipts and other travel reimbursement. The policy will not need to be continually updated to account for price changes, as it will be tied to the state's reimbursement rate. A motion was made and seconded and passed to approve the updated elected official out-of-state travel policy with one minor edit, and I would like to, do I make a resolution? We'd like to make a resolution right now for that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for a resolution to update the elected official's out-of-state travel policy. Did you want to describe what the minor adjustment was, or is that in the document? Ms. Beckman?
The minor change had just been making it a resolution. I believe in the minutes I had thought it was a motion, but it was originally adopted by a resolution, so it needed to be a resolution for, again.
Okay, I misunderstood the question. You probably explained it better than I heard it, so. City Attorney Scott, can this go into effect right away, or Administrator Grammets, or do we have to wait until after an election cycle? Because it has to do with elected officials?
It's a pay raise.
Not compensation, no. This is reimbursement for.
I'm inclined to agree with the city administrator that this is not a salary increase, which would be subject to that restriction you referenced. This is simply a reimbursement policy, so I believe it can go into effect immediately.
Okay. Additional discussions. Councilmember Osmis.
Thank you. And I don't know if it explained it in the, in the new policy, but some larger cities, like Washington DC, they, there are some agencies that have a larger reimbursement rate because some cities have larger expenses than, say, like Minneapolis. Does this take that into account?
Absolutely. When you go on the website, you can actually choose which state and then which city, and it will give you the rate specific to that, whether it's metro or non-metro, and the states, yeah, some have higher expenses than others.
Okay. I didn't know if it was just the Minnesota state's numbers that we were going with, but...
Correct. Nope, yeah, because it's got every state, as well as it breaks those states down into at least four or five different areas as well. For Minnesota, it has St. Cloud, Rochester, Duluth, metro, and then kind of everyone else falls under a blanket.
Okay. Additional comments, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I think just for clarification...
I think just for clarification, we do want to note that this is the federal IRS reimbursement rate as compared to the state rate. That's just like the current mileage at 58 cents that we've adopted as a city. This is the federal rate, not necessarily the state rate. So it will be the one that the IRS puts out, the Office of Management and Budget puts out the rate for the entire United States, and they break it down by, you know, the same rate we had to be, way we had it before, breakfast, you know, noon, and evening meal. So it's actually the federal IRS reimbursement rate is what you're approving.
Okay. Council, you understand all that? Councilmember Elverado.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad you made that clarification because it seems like when you review the item number four, it doesn't talk about federal reimbursement rates. So I think it's important that that's clear.
Well, I think in 4D, the adding, I think the U.S. General Services Administration meals an incidental per diem rate, is the federal piece? My question will be, what's the difference between the federal reimbursement piece and the state one?
Mr. Grammets?
Other than we have the whole U.S., obviously, we can deal with wherever our employees go, but is there a big difference on your lower-tier reimbursement for a city like Wilmer, for instance? If someone came here, is there a difference between a state and a federal plan for that reimbursement?
Mr. Grammets? Hey, if I get to your question.
Well, you said this is a federal one, not state.
Right.
Do we have a state reimbursement plan that you could jump on, just like jumping on a federal one?
Not really, because the state of Minnesota rate won't go to Washington, D.C. You know, it would be like, you know, state of Minnesota. The one that was prior to this was actually, I think, part of the Minskew system negotiated in a contract between the state of Minnesota and their union, okay? And that's, that's fine for them, but this is more universal. It, it's, it covers the, it's not just a flat number, you know, like $7 for breakfast because $7 probably can get you a really good breakfast in Wilmer, but $7 gets you a cup of orange juice in Washington, D.C., as the mayor can attest here two months ago. So what we end up having, you know, is just a uniform system of deciding how much reimbursement that you'll receive, and it's, it works out really well because, as stated, you go to the website, you click on the state where you're going. If you're going to Cleveland, click on Ohio, and it'll, it'll show the major cities there or outstate Ohio, and wherever you're going, that's, that's what you get. It also lists that on your travel day, your day going out there is 75%, and the day coming back is 75%. You know, it lists it all out for the traveler, so it really makes it a really painless system. Now, the plus side of doing this for both elected and, and employees is that we reduce the amount of work that the finance department has to do in tracking down receipts, and as we all know, I've, I've approved a few that, that receipts get lost. And then it's always kind of a, you know, I lost my receipt, or I think we've all seen them where our receipt, the ink, the ink will actually smear, and you can't even read it when you get back from your travel, you know? So by going to this system, it's, it reduces the amount of effort finance has to go through. It reduces the amount of rejects that the city administrator has to say, no, you can't, you don't have a receipt, I can't give you any money for that, and it simplifies the process for both the employee, you know, and, and the city. So it, it's, it's just a better system to go to, and it's all, you know, it's, you know, cities across the whole United States just use this because of its simplicity. And it might be, it might be, and when it's all said and done, you know, it might end being $5, you know, a day more than, you know, what the current policy is, but we're saving way more than that in the finance department by not having to scour all the receipts, you know, from anybody that travels. It's well worth adopting.
You know, when this came, when this came on the agenda, I went and met with Mr. Grammets about this because it's a concern that I had, as he mentioned, had recently been in Washington, D.C. And, you know, there's some people that, you know, they would, you know, you might have, like you said, a glass of orange juice for breakfast, but then you want a big steak for dinner, and you're not going to eat lunch, we can't do that. Or this would allow that because you're going to get a flat amount, and then you can manage your, how you normally eat, or how the employee normally eats, rather than us saying, oh, we're sending you on a trip, now you can eat the way we tell you to eat. It's just a much better, this is a great policy to amend. It's really good, in my opinion. Okay, so we have a motion in front of us, additional discussion. Did you get your question answered? You did?
Yeah, I'm just looking at, you know, if the state of Minnesota had a different threshold and that was significantly lower than it would have been for anywhere else, if, if most of our employees or elected officials were traveling more in-state, would that savings be worthwhile? But the fact of the matter is, it has to be offset by the staff time to monitor those. So I don't know how far off those minimum thresholds would be, but it seems like they're probably within reason. I would assume Minnesota's not going to base theirs on something, without something tangible. They probably use the same idea to put their numbers in place, so I think I'm okay.
Additional discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, this is a roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantus?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Elverado?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Davis.
Next, a motion was made and approved to update the employee travel reimbursement policy, so I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the, updating the travel reimbursement policy. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Councilmember Davis.
Item number five is a motion. Staff presented the sixth, sixth section of the updated employee personnel, personnel policy, sick leave donation policy, and sick leave upon separation policy. Text in black is the league's recommended language. Text in green is language pulled from our existing policy, and the text highlighted in yellow is the new policy being implemented by the city. The following was all pointed out as new policies being implemented through this section of the policy. Requirement that all paid time must be used during a leave of absence, requirement that a termination has been given, and exempt employee must provide a four-week notice to receive their vacation or sick leave paid out. A motion was made and passed to adopt the sixth section of the new personnel policy and two additional policies, and I would like to make a motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to consider the employee personnel policy, section six. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Councilmember Davis.
Item number six is for information only. Staff distributed the seventh section of the updated employee personnel policy. At the league's recommendation, staff is utilizing their handbook template and customizing it to Wilmer's policies and procedures. Then item number seven was miscellaneous. Just a reminder that there will be no labor committee meeting on August 26th, there being no further business. The meeting was adjourned, and I make a motion that we file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
That motion opposed, that motion carries. Next is special finance committee meeting of August 16th. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. At staff's request, there was a special finance committee meeting scheduled on Friday, August 6th at noon. Those in attendance were Councilmember Nelson, Flaman, Osmus, and Fagerly. Others present were Finance Director Okens, Park and Rec. Director Rob Baumgart, Public Works Director Sean Christensen, Project Manager Kurt Hein, and Andy Engen from Engen and Associates. Meeting was called to order at 12:05. There were no public comments, and our recommended action for council is the Robins Island Four Season Shelter, and there are two resolutions. Staff explained to the committee that the bids were, had been received for the Robins Island Four Season Shelter. The bidders were asked to submit a base bid and alternates for asphalt shingles, polished concrete floor, air conditioning, spray foam insulation, wood ceiling, and wall feature in the community room. The three bids were received, there were three bids received, and the base bids were as follows. A, $891,250. B, $911,634. And C, $913,000. At this time, I'm, I want to just ask Mr. Baumgart, or Mr. Engen, or Mr. Christensen if they have any comments just on the bid process before we go ahead with the staff recommendations.
Mayor, city council? All the bids came in relatively close. I, I think we recommend, you know, accept the bid of the low bidder, and the finance committee did go over alternates, and they made some decisions. We would recommend going through with that. Otherwise, I think the contractor is ready, this Ram out of Winstead is ready to start right after Labor Day. They have their own earthwork crew, so they would be able to do the earthwork themselves. That's really the critical thing to get started, and they assured me that they'll be going right away, and so the intention is to get the basic building done this fall. If we have a decent fall, they will try to even get the site paving done. So in the spring, there'll be some landscaping and right around the building cleanup and finishing over the winter.
Thank you. Staff's recommendation was to keep the base bid of Contractor A of $891,250. That included the steel roof, to add the alternate of polished concrete floor of $19,127,000 to the project. This, along with the estimated engineering of $90,000 and the contingency of $70,000, would bring the total project to $1,070,377. Present funding for the project considered, consisted of the legacy grant from the Minnesota DNR of $606,000 and current city capital funding of $233,000, for a total presently available of $839,000, which would require current city capital funding, oops, current additional funding of $231,377. Areas of additional funding listed by staff were from the excess $2,008 revenues of $840,664, unspent 2019 capital improvement projects of auditorium of $250,000, Robins Island's amphitheater of $170,000, and excess dollars remaining from the purchase of public works mowers of $76,000. The committee discussed at length the alternatives, and if the funding from the amphitheater and the mower surplus is used, it would not only be able to fund staff's recommendation, but also to do the air conditioning, which I believe on the sheet lists at $9,047, and spray foam insulation of $5,728. After very lengthy discussion, it was moved second and passed to recommend to the council the two resolutions as follows. The first resolution was to reappropriate $170,000 budget, budgeted as partial funding for the amphitheater at Robins Island, and $76,000 left from the purchase of public works mowers to the Robins Island Four Season Shelter. And I would enter that resolution now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve reallocating funds to pay for the Robins Island project. Discussion. Councilmember Schwantus.
Would it not be appropriate to first talk about the dollar amount that we are going to spend and what the council would approve as far as those add-ons before we talk about where the funds are allocated from?
I guess that's up to the council as a point of question with the motion. I think we could call staff up to discuss their recommendations with us that were presented to the committee.
I think, I don't know if I heard the question right, but what I heard of the question was, do we approve the base project first? Is that what you're asking? And then approve the add-ons?
Well, if we're designating where the funds are coming from, it would depend on what the council actually approves as far as the total project cost as to where the funds are coming from. So if we haven't yet approved what that total cost is, how do we know where we're taking the money?
And if I may, I simply was asking staff to come up and present why we went through the process that we did at the special finance committee meeting to understand why their recommendations were and why our recommendations were there. And I think that would help us to understand the items with that.
Certainly. Who from staff wishes to come up? Rob?
Mayor, member of the councils, when we met as a staff, we talked about the base bid, and we came up with the steel roof, and that's the same look that we want to keep out throughout the whole shelters, and staff also talked about the polished concrete floor as a maintenance issue. Talking to the public works and our project manager, they felt that those are the two options that we need to have for this building. And then with the, if there are the additional funding, then, then we prioritize where we thought those other items could fit into the budget as well with their AC and the spray foam insulation.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Davis, followed by Nelson.
Why is the polished floor better?
The polished floor is easier to clean. It'll have a surface smooth like this. A steel trowel floor is a rougher, and it's also colored concrete. But it's a finish, it's cleaning, and I think public works liked, of the floors they have, they would like to have one of these floors that are smoother, easier to clean.
Okay.
Councilmember Nelson.
I just would like one of you two to speak to the, the other two that we discussed, the spray foam insulation. I think we had a conversation on, at the, at the committee meeting about that, and then why the air conditioning would be appropriate, how the, perhaps the changes that could take place in, in the use of the facility with, with, with that.
Well, when we talked about with the concrete floor, it was more for the moisture of the floor, and so when you can get that humidity off of the floor, it's not going to be slippery, and that's what we were concerned about. And having with the spray foam insulation, it's just going to seal the building a lot tighter and go be more energy efficient.
Additional comments? Councilmember Mesky.
I just want to review a quick history of where we were with this thing. When we first got this, we had some bids that were, I mean, some designs and some price tags that were fairly exorbitant and not kind of where we wanted to be, and we kind of set a, an idea of what a project should cost, and obviously, this has come in higher than what we thought those projects could cost, but now we've thrown in additional things, and now we're, I don't have those original numbers in front of me where those first projects were, but I'm thinking we probably have moved up pretty close to where we didn't want to be with one of those other projects. This is just the price of what this is going to cost now, or any reaction to that? Because I, I wasn't part of all the conversation at the committee level, but I'm looking at this going, the sticker shock I suffered at the first one, I'm feeling a little bit of that. It's still a little, about $20,000 short of that, but it looks like we were getting a million-dollar building whether we wanted or not, because that's where it's coming in at.
I feel like just because of the timeline of where we're at with this project and when the completion date needs to be done, we're, we're kind of at the mercy of the contractors in getting the bids in, because we're kind of, our backs are against the wall now with this, with the grant being due.
Because I, I mean, I would, I'd echo what, what our architect said. I mean, that, the bids came in fairly narrow, so I mean, it's obviously, that's the price of what the building is, but.
Councilmember Schwantus.
That, that might be what the bids came in at, but that's also based on the design. That might be what the bids came in at, but that's also based on the design. And I just want to go back a little farther than Councilmember Mesky did. When this project, when the grant was originally written for the $606,000 for the grant, it was $175,000 for a local match for a total cost of $781,000. That breakdown of that $781,000 was a four-season shelter for $365,000. $365,000. This is almost three times what that original estimate was. Then we were asked if we would waive and delete the boardwalk and take the $127,840 and add that on to the four-season shelter. So now we had $492,840 to work with. Staff came back again and said, we need to increase. Here are the different options. We had, we had an option that actually fell pretty darn close to that, was a little over that. And then they went up from there. And what my recollection is, I tried really hard to find the council meeting where we actually had this discussion. We spent a lot of time looking at the different options. And in the end, you know, what I recall saying was, we wanted a project to come in at budget at about $850,000 or $870,000, and staff figured out how to make that work. And now we're coming in over $1 million. I cannot honestly look my constituents in the eye and justify a million-dollar building. I think about a home that any one of us would build for $1 million and what that would all include. We're not getting, I mean, it's just, it's, I just cannot justify over a million-dollar project here. And so I think that I understand the cleaning portion, but I think that the polished floor is a slip hazard, and I would not want that, even if we had the funds available. This is a park outdoor facility. I would not approve the air conditioning. And if you don't have the air conditioning approved, you don't need the foam. I would delete all of the items that were recommended to be approved, so. But I can't, I can't support this project.
Councilmember Osmond, followed by Nelson.
Okay. If we go back to the other meeting where we had to do, the mission was to cut back on some of the costs. So it went back, and they took out a bathroom stall, took out some of the bathroom amenities to, and that was where some of the cost saving took place. I also had went to some contractors and said, explain to me how this can cost $800,000 with that same analogy of, I could build a house for $800,000 with granite countertops and with beautiful crown molding, and this is, this is not that elaborate. And then it was explained to me that you have to go with commercial-grade plumbing fixtures and air conditioning and HVAC and everything that goes into a commercial building, as well as, what do they call it? The rate of, that you have to pay people.
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage. Then that's more expensive than if I was building my own house. So that made sense to me. So now we were able to go back down to that 800 sum, and that's what came in at the bids. But now I look at this building, and just to cut costs, because we're saying that's what we want it to come in at. We're going to go with asphalt shingles when it makes more sense to go with the steel. That we're going to say, we're not going to do the spray foam insulation just to cut costs, when in the long run, and I do see this as a 30- to 50-year building, and over that time, you're going to have the heat savings and the air savings. Now initially, I also was not in favor of the air conditioning, thinking we were going to go with the breezes from the lake. But again, this past summer, when I look at some of the weather that we've had, I think that's going to continue. And we want this building to be used. And I, and just some different input that I've gotten from the community is that air conditioning is, they would say a necessity, but is a need, is a want for this, for this building as well. It is going to be a beautiful building at Robins Island, and we are increasing all of our usage that we have at Robins Island. And I just think we need to make it right. And it would be different if we were scrambling to come up with other areas of how we were going to come up with that $200,000 or $300,000. But staff has figured it out, and it's there for us to build this project right now, the right way. So I'm in favor of adding the other items.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. This is a difficult, difficult one because of the costs. But I think if we look at the history of this project, we made a commitment to apply for this grant back in 2015. We knew at that time that it was going to be difficult to get the items done in that grant for that amount of money. The mayor set aside more money than we were required to for a cash allocation because he knew that it was going to cost more money at that time. We've gone through a lot of different changes with this. I can't speak to how this building, who led us down the path to choose the building design itself, but we accepted that design. The park, the REC board sent it to us. We agreed with it. We sent it back. We did modifications. If we had built this two years ago, we probably wouldn't be seeing the bids, bid overruns. I think there's been a lot of time and energy in this. It was no different than the Rice Park project. It was over budget. We had to vote on that twice to get it done, and it cost us significantly more money the second time than it did the first time. This project is, we are now under the gun to get it done. In the meantime, since this was started, we built a million-dollar playground out there. We had a Robins Island task force to look at what we wanted. We talked about 12 months' usage with our, with our facility and to make sure that Robins Island could be used with that. We've, we've passed a local option sales tax that's going to spend additional revenues out there, or additional resources to upgrade parking and streets and provide for future. I think this is the right thing to do. It's not comfortable that it costs more money, but I agree with the things that have been said at the table, that it makes sense for us to do it and to do it right. And so to support staff recommendations, I think we were there. I think we walked through and listened to and justified why the additional, less than $15,000 would be the right thing to do now for the use of the building and for the ease with that. And so I think we have done our due diligence. It's not comfortable that it's more money, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Additional comments? Councilmember Mesky.
Well, we're getting a building that's not a million. I mean, if we're, the grant is covering a substantial portion of that, but it is a building that's $394,000. That's what the building's going to cost. And where we're tracking with Robins Island and what's going on there, the development that has been there, it is a tough pill to swallow. I didn't like voting for Rice Park either when I had to do that. But that is, it is, it is being overutilized. It's a great thing to do. It's a good problem to have. This one just, I don't like how the, how the plan unfolded and how we dealt with this, but I'm hoping it's not going to be an anchor on future grant opportunities. These bids have to come in quicker, and we have to get them solidified, because I think what we also had is time was against us, and I think we're paying for the difference of a few years in materials.
I think contractors say prices are going up 10% a year at least, so. Councilmember Fagerley.
Yeah, I too agree that it's, it's a lot of money, but we do have a grant, $600,000. So if you're going to do a building at a regional park, you should probably do it right the first time. This is going to be a nice building. You don't want to put asphalt shingles on it when it's next to the lake there, because you get winds coming off there, and you'll be patching the roof every so often. And spray foam, if you're going to insulate it, that's the way to go. And being by the lake, the humidity will be bad, so you got to have central air there to keep the humidity down, so. It's my feeling.
Additional comments? Councilmember Davis.
This might be a silly question. So if $250,000 comes from the unspent auditorium money, what happens to the audit? No? Is that not?
Well, they didn't use that funding source. That was, that was an identified source, but they're recommending taking from the amphitheater and from the Public Works mowers, not from the auditorium.
Yeah, okay.
That was just a funding source, correct? Councilmember.
Your options.
Additional questions? Good question. Councilmember Elrato.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like the idea that we're going to build it right the first time, like Councilmember Fagerley indicated. Yes, our backs are against the wall. We're learning the process. I think we're understanding that we have to be, I don't know if we have to be more proactive to get this done, timeline better, so this doesn't happen every time, it seems. But there's a lot of things happening. We got our regional playground, awesome. We got the pickle courts, great. You know, things are happening. We got the Rotarians upgrading and contributing to the park. We want something that's going to be able to be utilized and enjoyed by the public, and I think we have to bite the bullet, so to speak, and move this forward and make sure we get it done and done right.
Councilmember Fagerley.
And Mr. Mayor. I don't want to put Mr. Engen on the spot, but I think I did ask you way back in the '90s when we did the WE Act building, is there any reduction in your fee?
You know, just putting the project and the whole perspective, you know, a year and a half ago or something, we did a proposal, and the first part was a pre-design. And I think to answer some of the big-picture questions of getting a project done, there's something that we like to do in every project is a pre-design, where you go through and answer the big questions of what are we really trying to do, and why are we doing it, and what is the program? Like here, we were told to begin with the master park plan that was adopted. And they described this building and in the grants, it was a program area, a place to rent facilities and storage and meeting facilities. And we never had any group we could really discuss. They answered the questions that we had in our proposal. Our original proposal was a discussion of pre-design, answering the big questions. Why are we trying to do this? What are we trying to accomplish? And we went ahead and we did a plan, because we had to have something, and we presented, and that was that first plan we developed. And then the conversation, we had to, we understood there was a meeting, we had to shrink it down. And talking with staff and a meeting with the REC board, we reduced the scope of the project. We eliminated the staff area. It was going to be an unstaffed building. It would be more of a rental shelter rather than a program center. That's a change from what was started originally. But I think if we could have, to do a project efficiently and to solve the issues, if we can really do upfront, there was a budget put together here, but it was a budget without really answering those questions. What is the size that we want to have a meeting facility? How many people? You know, and even the restrooms. You know, we could, we started by looking at the facilities they have there, and we did shrink them down some from that. But is that, you know, is that, that's a policy decision. You know, and, but I think if, to get a project done on a budget, if you can have the budget relate to the big picture of what you're trying to do from the very beginning, that is the thing, that's really the thing that was missed in this project. There was, for a year, there was not a, you know, there's a change in staff and all kinds of issues. But the understanding, so everybody's on board of why we're trying to do something and what do we, what are we trying to do? I think we did spend a lot more time than we would have budgeted. We did budget because of this issue. The price here, it came in less than the one that was, the plan and the budget that was approved in May. You know, the alternates have never been in that budget. And, but the question is, I agree with you, it's, it's questioned. When we've talked to people, contractors in our debriefing, one of the questions was prevailing wages. These contractors did mention that's an issue, and, you know, we have a way of, that's a hard one to estimate, because it deals with which contractors you're working and which trades. The other one is, we have seen with the data that we use for estimating, our projects that we had all earlier this year have all come in under budget. You know, but now this time of year, contractors are busy, and they know the market, given that, the competition. And that's not just the general, it's the trade contractors. Everybody's got work. And we did, you know, we were shocked at a couple of the prices that we did have, but they were competitive, and they were, it's what the market was bearing.
So the answer is?
Well, I think, I think we've done our job, and we will continually do our job. I think that, I don't feel that we have not done our job for you.
I had to ask. No?
Councilmember Mesky, followed by Elrato.
And since you asked that, I'll say that $70,000 in contingencies, since this is so fast from approval if it happens to build, let's hope that the contingencies aren't necessary either, then you could talk about saving money there. So I mean, there's other ways to do those things.
Councilmember Elrato.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what I'm understanding, what I think I heard you say was, as a council, we, we didn't provide enough direction to you in designing the building. Is that what I'm hearing?
You know, I think it's a question of, the traditional way, there's a facility committee or building advisory committee. There's a group to debate. And I think with the change in structure, the structure wasn't really in place. I think normally, it wouldn't be a city council like this, like this body, but the process of, you delegate it down to a smaller group that can debate and discuss an issue.
Councilmember Elrato, the way I see that is that we got, we got in the minutia. Same thing that happened on Rice Park. We got down and figured out how many nails we're going to put in the shingle. And these are staff projects. And this should have been 100% turned over to staff with 100% authority to move forward. And we need to take this as a lesson as a council, that when we get to the local option sales tax projects, we have to empower our staff, the people we hired to make the decisions, and allow them to make those decisions. Because that's why it costs us money. You know, if we're three years out from when this hit the floor, I mean, that's 30% right there. You know? But if we had empowered the staff, and this isn't Rob's fault, you know, Rob came into a hornet's nest, and he tried to pick up the pieces. And as a council, we need to empower our staff to do the work that we've assigned to them. And then if we don't like what they're doing, then come back and say, we don't like that. But at the end of the day, our staff is going to do the work that we tell them to do. You know, the park plan that was adopted had one thing in it. That was a different thing than what we're getting. The mayor's task force looked at it differently. Then it came to the council, the council revised it. We actually had a, we actually had a park board member that resigned over this, that resigned over the fact that we cut the project. And I don't know how many council members remember that. But, you know, so, so we have to be careful. I mean, it's good to get public input, it's good to ask the questions, but, you know, and this isn't directed at you, councilmember.
I understand.
Elrato, I'm just answering the question you asked. You asked it, so I'm answering it.
Correct.
In my opinion.
Yes, sir.
And so, so we just really need to empower our staff to make these good decisions. And, you know, Administrator Grammets and I have talked about this of how we really need to get the staff in place to make these good decisions. And I know Administrator Grammets is really working his tail off to make that happen. And, I mean, our future's really bright. I mean, we really have a bright future. We've got really good people in place, doing really good work, similar to what Councilmember Shontis said. We have to empower them to do that. Councilmember Osmond.
I think, I think the short version is, I think we were victims of continuity. And it was just the circumstances that happened that we were in the middle of Wilmer Community and Rec dissolving, and then that put things in flux. And then just, we were in the middle of hiring our own staff, taking that over, and, and the local option sales tax coming in and other options that were going with that building. And it just didn't flow, I think, as easily as it could have, even if we'd had a city administrator that was, that had solid continuity through the project. We didn't have it. And I think that was all circumstances that played into it. But now... And I think that was all circumstances that played into it, but now we are in a position to do the right thing. It will be a beautiful building and it's at our regional park.
Additional questions? Otherwise, I'm moving to consensus on, Councilmember Nelson.
I just have to follow up the comment. You know, we talked about that this grant was applied for in 2015. We did not start working on this project until last year. So we lost a lot of ground. There were three years in there. So it was probably complicated by the changes with Community and Rec. But when we had a grant that was, that represented a million dollars or between our contribution and that, we should have been working on that as soon as we were awarded it. And so I think there is a lesson for us to learn. And there, you know, we are, we are paying a financial price for not completing this project earlier. But I do think it's still a great project and we need to be thankful for the grant money and learn, learn from this and look for other grant opportunities for our community.
And we have a motion on the table and the motion is to increase the Robins Island Four-Season Shelter by 246 and decrease the amphitheater and public works mowers. And so, so I'm assuming now that by this action is that we're taking the amphitheater out of consideration for the local option sales tax then? Is that correct? I'm just assuming that, I don't know.
The discussion that we had was simply that there was not any current legal obligation for the amphitheater. We did not know if that, where that project was still standing, if this is something that is still being considered, that the money could be put back in next year's budget to do the amphitheater. But I think the staff and committee were not aware that there was anything happening with the amphitheater right now.
So Rob, has it been removed out of the local option sales tax? And it wasn't taken out of the mayor's recommendation?
It's not with the local option sales tax, it's not one of the.
Shelters are.
Shelters are. It's roads, parking lots and shelters. That's the priority. Amphitheater has never been talked about.
So I put this money in the budget, you know? And the amphitheater was in the mayor's task force, it came out of the mayor's task force meetings. It made it through that.
I have not heard anything about any progression or anything about the amphitheater.
Okay. That's why I'm asking questions.
Yep.
If I may, one more. There, there was no conversation that we were for or against the amphitheater. It was simply an acknowledgement that this was money that's in this year's budget, but there, to everyone in the room, there was no awareness of anything in particular going on this year. And so that if the amphitheater is still on the table, that it could be added back in to your budget next year.
Okay. So no one called me. I'm the one that put it in the budget. No one called and talked to me about it. Did anybody talk to Rachel Skripat?
No.
In regards to the local option sales tax?
No, regards to the amphitheater.
No, but it was my understanding that you had met with Mr. Grammets and Mr. Okens on Monday morning before we met and had reviewed the information that the special finance committee meeting was, was, because I asked that question, if you were aware of what was coming to us in the special finance committee and I was told that you had met. So that was my awareness of staff's recommendation for where the funds should come from.
I wasn't asked if they should, where they should take the funds from, I wasn't asked that. So as a matter of fact, I said I didn't support this project. I didn't support going forward with it. So, so I told both Mr. Okens that and Mr. Grammets both that.
And that was shared with me also, but they also indicated to me that you had reviewed what the finance committee was going to be reviewing.
I looked at it, I didn't review it. The difference of reading it and reviewing it. Additional discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and it's been seconded to decrease the amphitheater and mowers and increase Robins Island. Is this a resolution?
Yes.
Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
No.
Davis?
No.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The second resolution is to, the second motion is to introduce a resolution to accept the base bid of contractor A with the alternates of the polished concrete floor, air conditioning, spray foam insulation and authorize the mayor and administrator to sign the agreement. And I will enter that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
No.
Davis?
No.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays.
That resolution passes as well. City council comments.
Yeah, I see.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. There were no other discussion, discussion items and I will enter a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the special finance committee meeting, discussion. Home favorite of the motion, signature by S.A.N. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, that motion does carry. Next, we have the city council comments. Can't remember who I started with last time. Councilmember Nelson, I'll start with you.
I have no comment.
Councilmember Fagerly?
No comment.
Councilmember Mesky?
I just want to thank councilmembers Davis and Nelson for doing my committee work last week while I was out of the country.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Pass, thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
No comment.
Councilmember Alvarado?
No comment.
Councilmember Osmas?
Just saying, we have a park and rec meeting coming up on Wednesday at 1:30. We have Public Works Public Safety at 5:15 on Wednesday and we've got finance on the 22nd on Thursday?
Yes.
At 5:15.
Yes.
Anything else for the good of the order? Councilmember Nelson?
Is there Public Works Wednesday? Yes.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, we adjourn.